We're gonna call the number of appeals needing to order on the 28th.
That too. On November 28th, 2018. Hey, look at that, 7 o'clock. First on our agenda is 6 Powder Mill Lane. Karen, if you want to read the notice?
Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Cooperstein, 6 Powder Mill Lane, Southborough. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGoliffe Hearing Room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, November 28th, 2018, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petition of Mr. and Mrs. Daniel Cooperstein, 6 Powder Mill Lane, Southborough. The petitioner is seeking a variance to construct a two-story addition at the side and rear of the property. Relief is requested pursuant to Section 174-8.3d 3B, rear setbacks 35 feet, and 174-8.3d 3c, side backs 15 feet. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the Office of the Building Department located at 9 Cordova Road, Southborough, Mass. during normal business hours. Craig Nicholson, Chairman.
Okay. Would you like to make the presentation?
Sure, thank you.
I think they're on.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for taking the time to meet with us tonight. I know everybody's got a lot going on this time of year, so we certainly appreciate you taking the time to be here with us. My name is Glenn Travis. I'm the Principal at GMT Home Designs, and I'm here with my client, Dan Cooperstein, and my wife, Carrie Travis, who also works for GMT Home Designs as well. So, a couple of things I'd like to state right out of the gate is, this has been a project that Dan and Lynn have been thinking about for quite some time. The variance is requested to build an addition to house one endless pool, an office, a bathroom, and a room set aside for a sauna. The pool, very specifically, will be used as therapy for their youngest son, Alec, who has special needs. Swimming reduces his anxiety and really gives him a chance to relax by being able to have this chance to do the swimming. At the same time, my client, Dan, has had surgery on both his feet and can no longer run for exercise, which he did a fair bit of that years ago. This pool will provide year-round the ability to exercise for health reasons. And so, some people put in an endless pool just because they want to have a chance to watch TV and swim at the same time. This actually has a very specific request, not just for one family member, but two of the four family members in the home. Historically, I like to work within the constraints of the setbacks for any, you know, project that I am hired to work in. Unfortunately, in this case, due to the shape of the lot, it really was beyond our abilities due to the program requirements to adhere to the setbacks. And what I mean by that is, the size of the endless pool dictates a certain size addition. And we need to, when you get out of the pool, have the ability to walk around on all four sides before you transition to get into the house. Really, the front of the house is on the right elevation. And so, when you look at what's the best location to put this addition, it's really where we put it. We put a lot of thought and effort into this. You come up the driveway, and you're on the garage side, which is really the front of the house. So, on the left side, there's really not enough space for any kind of addition. So, the rear and the side is really where this addition needed to go. So, it's about a 26-by-28-foot addition, two-story addition. Really, the second floor is actually open to the first floor. So, there's an open rail system where he's going to have a small office, but it's all actually interconnected in that way. I will say too, because of the amount of time that's gone into this to date, timing for us is really of the essence. We have a builder that we've worked with, Encore Construction, who's ready to go. Obviously, we're hoping to have this meeting, you know, and get approval. Tonight is our hope and our expectation from all of you. And I don't know from that, Dan, you want to add anything to what I've shared?
No, no, no.
Okay. Did you want to talk anymore about the plans and the location and where your request lies and some of the points of, you know?
Yeah, we're coming out of, yeah, to answer your question, I mean, in essence, that side of the house is where on the, is the dining room and the living room. And so, kind of connecting this addition to the most obvious spot in the house, it's gonna, we're gonna create a, which is super popular these days, a sliding barn door with a pocket door behind it that connects the living room right into this space. And so, that really is the, location-wise, the best spot in the house to transition into this endless pool area. The other factor why we're there is humidity control. Whenever you add an indoor, anything with water, you have to be able to have the right setup from an HVAC perspective. And so, having it on this wing of the house as well allows us to isolate it and really do what we need to do from a heat and cooling perspective as well. And so, again, on the overall site, if you look at the configuration of the lot, which is really on page two, you have a septic system that's on the right side, so where the walkway goes from the driveway over to the front door, which again is on the right elevation. Right next to that walkway is where the septic system is. And so, we really couldn't put it anywhere in that area, because that's a whole 'nother can of worms, as we all know. And really, on the left side, there's really not the space to handle a 26-foot addition. So, again, no matter where we put it, relief was going to be needed, and we felt like this was the spot on the site. There's a lot of trees on that side of the lot as well. The good news is, there's only a couple of trees that really need to be trimmed or come down to make room for this. But all along that edge, the buffer between 3 Garrison Lane and 8 Powder Mill Lane, we've got some trees. So, there are some photos you can look at where that's going, and all of those trees, those pine trees, will remain. As far as the architecture goes, we started a design with taller windows on the first floor, but in way of privacy, due to the physical therapy that's going to be happening in that room, we had fixed windows up higher on the wall to allow privacy for my clients when they're in that space, you know, having that session in the pool. And that's on all three sides.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, on the, the end where you're proposing the addition, I'm just, I'm still trying to get the topography here. Who is, is there anyone abutting off that end of the house? It's unclear to me, because the...
Yeah, no, it's a driveway.
Okay.
It goes from the cul-de-sac to a driveway.
So, it looks to me like your house is set back in the property. Your neighbor on that side is actually kind of forward on the property.
That's correct.
So, there's not that much of an impact on them, but...
Actually, yes. So, the homes on both sides that are abut are to the other side of the property where our garage is.
Yeah, okay. But if you went straight out the back...
Yeah, that's a driveway that goes to the house back here.
It's a driveway, okay.
Yes, exactly.
Oh, is that, okay, so...
If you look at, so, so there's a house back here, and there's a driveway that goes along here to the house back here. So, there's tree cover all along the edge of his property, and then there's a driveway here that goes to a house back here.
Okay, so they, their property, I think I see it now, it's a really bizarre shape.
It is.
This long, skinny neck is essentially nothing but driveway.
Yeah.
Is that on Powder Mill, is that on Powder Mill Lane?
That's on Garrison.
Oh, okay.
No, I know that one. Just where that is, exactly.
And I'm also, I'm seeing this correctly, that essentially what you have for a patio, a brick patio there, is not necessarily just in violation, but it actually, does that go over the property line?
That's existing.
Right, I understand. I just want to make sure I'm seeing this correctly. So, that existing, right, you have an existing structure, I'm just trying to confirm. That looks to me like it's either right next to the property line.
Yeah, it's stone on the ground. There's no...
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a...
Right, it's not a raised structure, it's really a flat patio.
Not at all, right.
Yeah, even if that became an issue, my client would certainly have that piece removed, so it's, you know, but it's ready.
Yeah, no, it's existing, so that doesn't, I just, I think the shape of the property is, you know, pretty unusual.
It is.
I'm just, I'm trying to get the feel for the neighborhood as well.
Yeah.
Because this is really good. The, yeah, the print we got, it's just, it becomes difficult to see, you know, the abutting properties.
Yeah.
Okay.
Paul, you have any questions?
Well, I mean, I guess the usual question, the circumstances, if there was any abutters that have objected or...
Not to our knowledge.
Don't care for, no, nothing got received, no one's here that, I mean, so. I agree with the assessment that to do what you want to do, that's the only place you can put it.
Yeah.
It was a little tricky at first to figure out what the, what you were delineating as the side and rear.
I'm right there with you.
So, I get, now I, you know, yeah, I get what that is.
Because the front of the house is actually the right elevation.
Yeah, so that's...
You know, per the information, yeah.
But, I mean, so, I mean, I think it, I mean, from an architectural standpoint, it actually does, and it does flow to, like, the whole living room area and everything. So, I think it makes, makes perfect sense. I mean, the, is the, I know the building inspector already, was already submitted to him, there was no issue with the height of the, so that's not...
We're well within our height requirements. I think it's stated right on the elevation, the heights as well. So, I think it's 23 or so feet to the existing ridge, and we're underneath that anyway. So, we're well within the height requirements.
I mean, I think it, I think it looks, I mean, I think it looks nice, actually, so...
Yeah, we tried to actually convey architecturally with choice of materials that something a little bit different was happening behind the walls. So, we used the board and batten, as you can see, on the upper part of the addition, and then we used a fiber cement that's a little bit wider of a clapboard. His house has the wood clap, you know, with, you know, a four-inch exposure. We went with a seven, just to kind of keep the same color scheme, but to show something a little bit more exciting, a little bit more, you know, still keeping in character of this colonial, but wanting to convey something else is happening behind those walls.
Debbie?
Yeah, my question was on the topography as well with the 8 Powder Mill, but you answered my question, so I'm all set.
Okay, great.
Just, again, that's just for clarity, the, what are we considering the rear setback in this view, anyway?
I believe it's on the plot plan. It's stating on the, it's 20.8 feet to the PR addition. So, they're considering, if you look at what I'm showing here, this is considered the rear of the property.
Okay, yeah.
Back here.
Right, 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 okay. And that's where it was, 46 feet, but now you're, and the minimum is 35, so violating it there.
Correct.
But again, if I understand this correctly, that's abutting a driveway, essentially.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, you could, I mean, if you wanted to get, you know, picky about it, you could say, it seems like there's a part of it you didn't necessarily have to add to not violate that. I would kind of defer to some of what Paul said, though, is, like, it makes sense, and if the abutters don't have an issue with it, you know, I don't really have an issue with it.
Okay. I actually did a little, in the schematic design phase, where we landed here, I did try to create an addition that would work within the setbacks, but again, based on the size of the endless pool and what needed to happen around it. So, even if we didn't have what's called that transition space from the living room to where I have the endless pool, we still would have needed relief with setbacks, just based on that 18-by-28 addition. So, it would have been an impact on the side.
Yeah, I'm talking about the sauna and shower on one side.
Right.
You have an entryway on the other and stairs. But you're saying even without that, you'd be in violation?
Violating, we need relief, correct.
I don't have any concerns or questions about the application.
Okay, anyone in the audience looking to make a comment on this one? All right, I don't have any questions either. It seems pretty straightforward to me.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second?
All in favor? Close the public comment?
Excellent, thank you.
Excellent.
Andrew seconded?
But we're not, we don't have to take a vote.
Yeah, we just closed, let people talk about it anymore. Bear with us for a second.
No problem.
I guess I'll make a motion to accept the plans as proposed.
Approve the application for variance?
Can we say per plan, though? So, the setback is...
Per site plan dated... Yeah, that's one, that's what was included.
So, the August 30th, or...
Revised August 30th.
Revised August 40th.
Revised August 30th? Approve the variance with setbacks as shown on the site plan dated August 30th, 2018.
You want me to? Sure. So, I move that we approve the variance application with the setback shown on the plan, last revised August 30th, 2018.
Can we hold off on that one second? One thing I do want to...
I have a, I'm just maybe moderately confused. There's a rev date of Thursday, September 27, 2018 on it as well.
That's not on...
The plot plan's August 30th.
The one that was included in the application.
Okay, all right.
You're looking at one that was just a handout for today.
All right, all right, right.
Yeah, the one that's included in the application is the one that we'll prove against.
Fair enough.
One of the things that we didn't discuss, and I want to make sure it's on record, is...
Just to be clear, Craig, if it was in this packet, it's still...
It was the bigger one, it just didn't...
Okay, that's the one, that's the one that's with it?
Yeah.
All right.
The official-sized one. Can we really talk about findings in terms of the need and the hardship?
I think there's an odd-shaped lot and the configuration of the existing house. This is not really controversial, so I think we can just...
I just want to make sure it's on record.
Sure.
You know, it is an odd-shaped lot, and where the house is sited, it does make it...
And where the septic is located and...
The septic is located, and the obvious need for this family to have this type of an addition.
True. Yeah, in terms of findings, that's correct.
Fully noted.
Okay, good. I want to make sure there's...
Nothing like having a thorough chairman.
So, you have Andrew's initial...
Yeah, yeah, who made the motion? Paul and then you?
Andrew updated the one with the dates.
Paul with an amendment by Andrew.
Who would like to second that?
I'll second it, but I think Andrew actually made it, correct?
Andrew made it.
So, I'll second it.
Fantastic. All in favor? Aye. All right, now we're done. You're all good.
Thank you, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Oh, you're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready?
7:15?
Yeah, it's 7:20, so we can move right along. All right, next up on our agenda is 60 Central Street. Assuming that's you folks. Karen, if you'd like to read the notice?
Mr. Terry Shiconi, 60 Central Street, Southborough, Mass. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGoliff Hearing Room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, November 28th, 2018, at 7:15 PM with regard to the petition of Mr. Terry Shiconi, 60 Central Street, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to open medical office practice specializing in aesthetic and cosmetic medicine. The property is located in BV Business Village District. Relief requested is pursuant to Section 174-8c 2. The Board of Appeals may, by special permit, allow several different uses if otherwise permitted in district. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the Office of the Building Department located at 9 Cordova Road, Southborough, Mass. during normal business hours. Craig Nicholson, Chairman.
Would you like to make a statement?
Certainly, yes, thank you. Thank you all for hearing us out this evening. My name is Terry Shiconi. I'm a physician. I'm joined by Mrs. Beth Amalkey. She's a nurse esthetician. We are here seeking a special permit to change 60 Central Street from its current single usage status to multi-use status. The building at 60 Central Street currently houses a salon. They have space within the salon that they were formerly using for makeup, waxing, things like that, that they are not currently using. We were looking to open a private medical practice specializing in aesthetic and cosmetic medicine and got in discussion with the salon owner and thought that would be a good fit to pair in there. To be clear, we're not going to be doing any construction. Fortunately, the existing space she has, the salon owner has within the building, is adequate for our purposes. Some of the things we're going to be doing there, starting with simple, straightforward, like facial types of things, to injectable procedures like Botox, cosmetic fillers, and also lasers, aesthetic medicine for hair removal, skin rejuvenation, things like that. There is not currently a business doing that in Southborough right now with the closing of the med spa on Turnpike Road last year. So, we think it'll be a great opportunity for the town and for us as well, and for the patients we'll be seeing.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. On the application, the question number 14 wasn't answered, having to do with any prior variances or special permits. Just wanted to check with you on my copy.
There were, there were none that the current owner was aware of.
Okay. So, I'm a medical professional, I'm a pharmacist, so I, my questions are sort of more on the lines of whether this is considered a clinic or a medical spa.
Yeah, excellent question.
So, there'll be licensed medical professionals supervising there, and there's treatment rooms. Is that what these two rooms are going to be set up as?
Yes, so excellent question. So, it, this will be operated as a private physician practice with me as the medical director. As such, it is exempt from DPH requirements for clinical, clinic certification. So, it will be operated as a private physician office with myself as the supervising physician, and I will be doing the actual more medical procedures.
Okay. And does the facility need to be licensed, then? I mean, you're licensed, obviously, under CMR. Does it need to be licensed for the practice?
Right, so, if a, if you do not, according to DPH regulations, if you do not hold yourself out as a clinic, dispensary, or med spa in this case, you, and it's a private physician practice owned completely by the practitioners, we've set up an LLC of which that is the case, then it does not require that certification.
Okay. Will you have any sort of dispensary pharmacy or anything there? Just, your drugs will be there, lockup or whatever?
Injectables, we'll be using some lidocaine, things like that, yeah.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, just in terms of, my only thought was impact on the neighborhood. So, currently, there's a business there, it's a spa. You're basically taking space that's not really being used by the spa currently, right?
Correct. I would refer to it more as a salon.
Salon, sorry, okay. It would appear from what you submitted that there's plenty of parking there. I'm just curious if you feel like there's an impact on the flow of patients or customers in and out of the facility, based on the fact that you have something a little bit different there?
Yeah.
I don't know if you're really adding the salon plus this, or if the net is basically the same.
Yes, so, I would, I would agree that with the statement, the net is probably the same. The part, there are 19 parking spots there. Up to about a year ago, the current owner was using this space that we're going to be in as a, again, for makeup and waxing. The size of it is, and also just with us getting off the ground, I mean, we're going to be basically doing one person at a time. So, as far as traffic and parking, in addition to what's going on in the salon, there would probably be never more than two patient cars there. And all of our, I mean, even the simpler facial types of things that are in there for at least a half hour, for the more medical stuff, it's going to be longer.
Yeah, that...
So, I don't anticipate a traffic or...
Yeah, that was one of the things I was thinking about, is if you, if you have a fairly predictable business, like you know that 30 or 45 minutes is enough, then you probably don't have six people in the waiting room, like you can...
We honestly wouldn't, we don't have the space to have more than one waiting.
Right, right. So, I, you know, just to sort of understand it, I think the net effect is, you know, are you somehow bringing in more traffic? And I think if you have, like I said, a predictable sort of business, I would think that would keep your waiting area down to, you know, the next one or two patients?
We can't, we, the space does not allow us to have more than one person waiting at a time, and we will not be booking more than one person waiting at a time.
Okay.
So, I think that the multiple uses are compatible with each other, you know? Beauty salon is compatible with aesthetic and cosmetic medicine. I just wanted to ask, what are you thinking in terms of a sign?
A sign? So, the Business Village zoning requirements allow a sign that is a total of, total signage for the property of 25 square feet in total. The current...
So, there is one there already?
There is one there already. The current sign dimension is four by four, and we would be going three by three.
There'd be another sign that faces Central Street, yeah, that advertises your...
It's, yeah, and it would, correct, yeah.
Okay. I don't have any questions or concerns otherwise about that application.
What did you say the total allowable sign square footage was?
Total of 25 square, square feet for the property.
Okay. Just doing my math. I agree with Andrew. I think, I think if this was one business, they could easily do the same thing if they had the people on staff to do it, and no one would be any the wiser. So, I definitely think they're compatible. And are there any, like, this may have been what you were asking, but like, in terms of like, health, you know, health, health code things that have to be approved here as well? I know you were talking about private physician office and...
Right. Right, so, um, again, the Department of Public Health allows for private physician offices to exist outside of their scope of regulation, as long as the business entity is wholly owned by the medical providers, doctors, nurses, nurse practitioners, yeah, a pharmacist probably, I'm not sure, but, um, so, once it's a physician-only entity, it then falls under the Board of Registration in Medicine, um, of which, you know, I'm currently licensed and we have requirements for continuing education and board certification and such like that, and those are all current.
And, but inside the actual facility, does the Southborough Board of Health come and check you out every now and then, because you're doing procedures and you have things there? Does anybody ever come and check out your facility?
They would not need to.
Not need to, but could or couldn't?
Oh, I mean, they could, I mean, if, if they gave notice, and, um, I think it's within the purview of them to do that, but I...
Okay, so they can if they had a reason to?
Right, and there's no, a- at this point, there's no requirement for us to, to gain a certification now.
Okay, all right. I just went, I was wondering if there is any, you know, if there were a bunch of complaints to the Southborough Board of Health, you know, what's, what's the action? Who has the authority to go in and take a look and see what's going on?
Um, I don't know the details of the, the process of that, but the Board of Public Health in response to complaints, uh, would probably, um, bring that up with the Board of Registration in Medicine, and then it would be my licensing issue that would be at stake.
Okay.
So, so was it fair to say then that it's really, the oversight is really your own individual license versus...
The Board of Registration in Medicine.
Right.
And Board of Registration in, of, in nursing for Beth.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna assume there's no one in the audience that wants to say anything about it, because there's no one. We do have somebody.
Caleri.
You're a neighbor. You need a, you need to get to a microphone, please. Just, yeah, just grab that.
Jim Caleri, fifty-one Central Street. I'm obviously a neighbor, I can see the property and so on and so forth. Uh, I listened to what you were going to do. Uh, I clearly don't think there's any viol, any issue that you're going to create that's going to affect the neighborhood, in my opinion. It clearly meets the, what we would want to see in a village business, business district. It's going to give mixed use into the building, and I don't think that's a problem for this building. I think the, the good part of this, when you see businesses being able to merge together and work together in one property, it also helps the landlord be, with funding to improve conditions within the, within, within the building. And if you look at Central Street, in my, you saw me at the Newton Street issue, I have the same issue with Central Street, not related to his property, but at the end a pile of dirt. This would give this message out to Southborough that we will take mixed uses, proper mixed use, and I think this is a proper mixed use. So, as a neighbor, I strongly urge you, uh, grow, grant this special permit. I don't think you're affecting the neighborhood at all with what they're going to do. Questions on the Board of Health, like with any, any, you make a decision whether it be a variance or a, or a special permit, and if there's septic requirements, your variance or special permit, um, does not empower, impose something on the Board of Health. There are regulations, if there are for his industry, he's going to have to meet, or the project, he just doesn't occupy, even though you granted the special, uh, permit, so I, I strongly urge you to support this. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other questions here before we entertain a motion to close public hearing?
No?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay, that was, that was everybody. Um, would somebody like to make a motion? I think, uh, as Mr. Caleri said, as I think we were all kind of leaning anyway, that this seems to be a pretty easy description of compatible businesses in a, in a mixed-use building.
So I'll make, I move that we approve the special permit application.
Sec, Paul? Paul?
Paul seconded.
All in favor? All right, all in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. Good luck, dude.
Okay. File.
Um, we talked about, I guess, or I, I may have your contact information as well. So I'll do, I'll do both.
Thank you.
I'll do best to make sure you...
All right.
Good night.
Good night. So the last thing on our agenda is meeting minutes.
I have one, um, comment in the, on the first page of the list of the people that were at the meeting.
Right.
Um, Karen, you mentioned at one point that, uh, Mr. Isabel...
Oh, I spelled that wrong?
No, no, he's, maybe I'm missing something. I don't see him listed on the first page, but he was the property owner...
Yes.
Of Mr. B, the, Mr. Bemis was his representative, yeah.
Yes, Warren. Yep, he's, uh, ninety-seven, ain't he?
I think he was, uh...
Yeah, he's the owner of ninety-seven, he was going to buy the...
He was going to buy it, or is going to buy it, has bought it.
Was the, uh, the current owner, the developer, was there, right?
Yeah.
Is he on here too?
Quality framing.
You should probably put him on there as well.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm usually pretty good about that.
Keith Gilchrist, the Quality Contractor, Inc. Okay.
Any typos in there?
I haven't seen any typos. Anybody else have any other comments that they saw? Well, that would have been embarrassing if somebody actually called, since I forgot to silence my phone. Anyone?
Nope, I'm good with it.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of October seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen?
I s, so moved.
So moved. Anyone second?
Second.
Debbie, getting on the board with a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
I'll, I'll just abstain since I was, I wasn't present. They look swell, but I'll abstain.
Okay.
You were absent, Paul?
I was absent. You're in spirit, though.
I'm sure.
With that, we're done with our agenda, do we have any reason for a December meeting?
I was going to ask, uh, Karen that, if there's anything in the pipeline, because we would be, you know, the holidays are coming up.
I know.
You probably set a January date.
That would be a good idea.
So you could do it from a month and a half, like on the twenty-fourth, or...
Anybody busy?
That'd be the twenty-sixth.
Nothing on the docket?
Um, yeah, I can't...
Sounds like they don't have anything on the docket.
Dates in January, folks. January. I have the sixteenth down as kind of my general third Wednesday of the month already listed.
That'd be excellent.
Sixteen sounds fine.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I just need to make sure I have the room, because our, we're competing with another boy for the room, so...
All right.
I think I booked ahead, so I need to make sure I've got that.
You tell them Craig wants it that night, and that's that.
That's right.
It will be done.
I'll confirm that by email tomorrow.
Okay, does any, is there, just out of curiosity, if we for some reason can't have the room, does the ninth or the twenty-third look better for people?
Twenty, um, no, either. Either's fine with me.
Anyone else have an issue?
Seems like they're open, okay, I'll...
I don't.
Either.
Either?
Yep.
Dave?
Either's fine.
Michael?
Yes, sorry.
January.
Sixteenth with the twenty-third?
Jeff, sorry, you're Jeff.
Clearly.
That's the role of the alternate, I think.
I can do, I think, either.
Okay, well, we're gonna s, plan for the sixteenth, and unless we don't have access to the room, then that'll be it, and if we don't have access, then we'll go for the twenty-third.
Ruby?
And right now, we don't have anything pending or applied for, so we'll see what happens between now and that meeting.
Okay.
I think once we get a new commissioner, people are, people are probably maybe waiting, you know?
That's possible.
So...
Okay.
Is it, is that, can I do it?
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Debbie, you want to take this second again?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. We're done.